Meeting to order, please stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks for coming, everybody. How about them lions, huh? I don't know, afraid to drink the Kool-Aid, but I think I already did.
Two weeks ago.
Again.
It's pretty exciting.
Yeah. Oh, that's good. Okay, roll call, please.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Maureen Borey.
Absent excuse.
Joanne Shirkey.
Absent excuse.
Artie Bryson.
Here and excused.
Kristi Hilton.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
I'm here.
Cindy Valentine, here.
Okay, Mark, you want a slide down? Okay, just... Hello, hello, hello. First thing we have is a public hearing for our parks and rec plan. I will entertain a motion to go into a public hearing.
Make a motion to open the public hearing for the parks and rec plan at 6:02 PM.
Support.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, I'm going to call or our public hearing for our parks and rec plan. Anyone like to come up and speak? Can speak. I actually went through it, I like it, it's all good. Reviewed it. So, no comments, no comments?
I did not receive any submittal comments either via email or through the office.
Okay. I know they did a lot of work on it. What's really cool is the survey, we received lots of input from the community. What do we have, about 350, Kathy, do you remember?
Yeah.
For the, I mean, which, you know, that's quite a bit, so... Good info there.
I thought the forecasted growth was interesting.
Yeah.
It's...
Down and up.
It's very slow.
Yeah. Very slow.
It's a very slow growth model.
Yep.
And it just caught my eye.
Yep.
I would bet that we would exceed that.
Yeah, I do too, I think, but... Any more comments for our public hearing on our parks and rec plan? None, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing for the parks and rec plan at 6:04 PM.
Support.
Motion to support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. We are now back into our regular meeting. Bill's payable. I'll entertain a motion.
Board, I'll make a motion to approve bill's payable in the amount of $144,760.61.
Support.
Okay, motion support, any discussion? What about you way down there, Mark?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Hearing none, roll call, please.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes, Artie Bryson, or I'm sorry, Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. All right, supervisors report. It's been pretty busy doing a lot of work. Wastewater treatment plant, spark grant, and other projects. Actually, submitting the spark grant today. It's basically, there's two asks, we were going to combine them into one ask at first. Basically, it's for replacing our playground equipment in our play area. And the second part was for new, or for exercise, outdoor exercise equipment in very, along our walking paths. And it's quite a bit of equipment, it's like 17 units. Talking to people at the DNR, there's three rounds on the spark grant, and they're going to give away 15 million, and then two rounds of 25 million. And the minimum ask is 100 grand, the maximum is a million. The reason I split it up into two grants was I was told that this first round, they're going to pick the low hanging fruit, in other words, the stuff that's not real big ticket items. So I thought, well, do one for 300 and the other for 500. And see what happens. So it's, it'll be interesting. They, they, they're doing a lot of consideration on everything, all access, ADA compliant, and actually, it's more than ADA, it's universal design. So, also the DDA asked me to look at options on building a pickleball court, three courts in the park. We're looking at placing them where the volleyball court is now, and then moving the volleyball court west where the grass is. Had several meetings with wastewater treatment plant. It's moving very well. We came to a consensus with Elgin Lake, IRA, and the county. And agreed on a timetable. We agreed that we will have the authority in place with agreements between the three communities and the authority by April 1st. Then at May 15th, we will take over the authority, I say, we'll take over a lot of administrative duties as far as like writing checks and, and doing billing and things like that. And then later in the fall, when we're ready, the authority will, will take over the employment, the actual employees of the water treatment plant. Until then, we'll just lease them from the county. Authority wants chance to, you know, get all the benefits in place and policies, procedures, handbooks. There's a lot to do. And that would be the final piece. And that will, we're going to probably in May, meet with the county again, get a date when we could do the employee bit, but we're guessing it'll be fall, it'll be before the end of the year. And I did communicate this with the employees at the wastewater treatment plant, and they're happy. So, actually tomorrow, Cindy, I'm going to present some plans for the DDA to the plan commission for a bathroom in Pearl Beach Pier. It's going to be on the lot right across the street from Chialigas. And then once approved, we'll go out for bids to get that built. And let's see, also with the parking lot to support the pier. We didn't receive a permit to go ahead with that with the county road. It's still going to be maintained as a road. And once that's all these are crossed, that'll be going out for bid. I've been working with two private commercial investors on two different locations in the township. So there's a lot, a lot of people looking and we got some action. They want to invest in Clay Township, so that's nice. Met with our auditors last week. And went over it a little bit. It, it was a good audit. All our fund balances were up. The general is up to 2.4 million, police, fire. Just about all, actually, all of them went up a little bit. And we, we received a clean report. They did give some suggestions on the HIDA board should do a little bit of tweaking, which I did forward that to HIDA. And in fact, I talked to their treasurer today, he's already working with our auditors on taking care of that. And, oh, they will be at our board meeting, they can't come till January 16th board meeting here.
The auditors, correct?
The auditors, what'd I say?
You just didn't.
Oh, okay, the auditors will be here. Tomorrow, right lands, the water plant, they're going to, the water plant membrane filter PLC upgrade is scheduled for tomorrow. So the water plant will be shut down for a little while. They're not expecting any issues or problems, but I hope everyone has their bathtubs full, no, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. We used to do that in Florida before hurricanes, fill your bathtub up. So that'll be going on. And I see a friend of mine in the audience I wanted to mention. We have five of our six emergency sirens installed in the township. And Dave Van den Bosch with, along with the county, paid for two-thirds of these, of the bill, saving the township, I don't know, 100, 120 grand. They should be online pretty quick. And it's, it's a good thing, keeping us safer. And then also, I wanted to mention that we will be anytime taking applications. We're going to be looking for a new trustee to replace Joanne. She, she's intending to resign. And so if anybody would like to apply to be a trustee, send in an applicant, a resume and a letter of interest to either myself or the clerk at claytownship.org. And we will put you in the pile. We should think about doing a subcommittee first, or, I don't know, we'll talk about that later.
So that term will be consecutive with our terms, right?
Well, it will be to serve the end of her term.
Right, right, so a little less than...
Yep.
Two years?
Yep. So... All right, that's all I have. Next is public comments, do we have any public comments? No public comments. Would you all come here for the Christmas cookies? Must be. No public comments. Okay, moving right along to the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of the board meeting minutes of December 5th and check reports.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support, any discussion?
Just one on the in-between meetings, the leased vehicles, how many leased vehicles does that represent?
And as the police department has, five? Six.
Six.
Six, the water department has a truck, and we have a township truck, or township, the suburban.
And they're all...
And the fire department.
Do on the same, same day, same month?
Pardon?
Are they all due on the same payment?
Yes, yes.
Same month?
Every month, yes. They all get paid at the same time.
Thank you.
Yep. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. All right, no unfinished business, we got everything done last month. New business. And I mentioned this in our supervisor's report, resolution 2022-25, splash grant match for park exercise equipment. I want to redo these two resolutions, we did one for the, to do the grant, but like I say, I split the grant up into two different grant applications and, and once, we'll see how it goes. When, for round two and round three, we're allowed to resubmit. And depending on if I don't get, if we don't get any of these, and how it scored, I'm not sure if I'm going to combine them back into one again, or tweak them back to others. But like I say, there's a lot of competition for this 15 million. I know Elgin Lake submitted a grant proposal for a full 1 million for their pool. Actually, they'd probably score pretty good, but like I say, the folks I talked to in the DNR with this first go around, they, they're going to go for the low hanging fruit, do the lower end one ask, but we'll see. But this is a resolution and support the grant for the exercise equipment, which there's some pictures and a map going around here.
Make a motion to approve resolution 2022-25, the spark grant match for park exercise equipment.
Okay, motion support. And this ask is for 311 million dollars. Half of it really is, is the cost of the base, because we're using that...
It's 311,000 dollars?
Uh-huh.
311,000 dollars?
Thousand dollars, what did I say?
Million.
Oh. Three hundred? Yeah.
Wait till you see that.
That's a lot of equipment.
311,000.
Everybody in the township's got their own piece of equipment.
Yeah, they, we're doing this, it's called pour-in-place rubber base. It's like spongy, like walking on clouds. And it's all barrier-free wheelchair, you know.
Accessible.
It's, it's nice. And all-inclusive, so... Other than that, I'll shut up. Anyone else like to, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Kristi Hilton.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes, Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes. Okay, pass. Next is resolution 2022-26, same thing, but this is for playground equipment replace. And truthfully, I wasn't even thinking about doing that, but when I was reading the grant, it scores higher for replacing existing equipment versus new equipment. So I said, hmm, go for it. And Cindy knows, I always wanted a pirate ship playscape. So we're looking at two pirate ships coming in here.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2022-26 for the spark grant match, park playscape.
Support.
Support, motion and support, any more discussion?
Is that pirate ship going to be adult-sized?
Yes. And we're going to pull the anchor up and... So, all right, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes, Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, moving right along. We have resolution 2022-27, adjust the water rates for 2023. 3%, right?
Correct.
It was basically a 3% increase. Entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution 2022-27, adjust water rates for 2023.
Do I have support? Support.
That goes up to 515 per 1,000 gallons?
515 per thousand.
And the charge will be 36.05 per quarter. That's a 3% increase, is that?
Uh-huh. Yeah. In this world, a 7, 8% inflation. So...
How much of that is going to go to the new board for the wastewater treatment plant?
None. Zero. You know, to go back to that, part of that agreement on April 1st, the county's going to sign over all the assets of that treatment plant to the authority, including transfer all the cash to it, so they'll be off and running. Sorry, that's just...
Well, I don't, I don't like any increase in any of those services.
In water.
Time with the economy the way it is.
I hear you, but...
It's a hard pill to swallow for some of the residents. Regardless what it is, 3%, 1%, doesn't matter.
Yep, but on the same token, I'll say we, we have to maintain and keep our infrastructure up, or it costs us a lot more in the long run. So, any more discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Cindy Valentine, yes, Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, next we have fire department interim captain, Scott Walsh.
Good evening, requesting permission from the board as of 12, 12/22 to place Scott Walsh as interim captain. While Billy Hubert's out on administrative leave. Scott is a fire EMS service veteran. He has over 30 years of experience and a retired battalion chief from the city of East Point. Scott holds the certs for this position of the office, and Scott would remain in the position until the outcome of bill.
I know Scott, he's a... Nice guy, nice guy.
Yep.
Very professional.
Knows his job. He's on duty right now. I can bring him down if you'd like.
Board, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request from Chief Rose for the Clay Township Fire Department, the interim captain, Scott Walsh.
Support.
Motion to support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of promoting Scott Walsh to interim captain, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Tell Scott congratulations on our behalf. Police Motorola service agreement.
Hello, this is a service agreement that we have to go through and have approved every year. This is, covers our dispatch council and everything that goes with it. Covers both preventative maintenance and if there's any kind of callouts, anything like that. If we have any issues, they're 24/7 to be able to call them out for any repairs, so...
And there's nobody else but Motorola?
No, unfortunately, there's not.
They're the only game in town.
Yes.
Kind of a percent increase was this contract versus last year's.
Well, it went up a little bit, because last year I went round and round with them.
I remember.
So last year, we didn't end up with an increase, but I knew this year's was coming. So we ended up with a little higher increase this year because we never got hit last year. So last year, I didn't know it was coming, they hit me out of the blue with it. I said, I'm sorry, my, you know, my budget's already done. So this year, we knew it was coming, and they made sure we were way ahead of time.
And it is a budget item.
Yes.
So what was that increase approximately?
On this one, I think it was about a 5%, and which is going to be higher, and I went round and round with them on that.
Yeah, we're at 7. 300, 400 dollars.
Yeah.
Entertain a motion?
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the Clay Township Police Department, the Motorola service agreement in the amount of $7,033.20, coming from line 207-932.
Motion to support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone, oh, no, 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 that's a contract, right? Roll call. Sorry.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hilton?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes.
Motion passes. Next we have police new hire, full-time dispatcher, Martha Webster. Is Martha here? I think she is.
Martha is here.
Come on up, Martha.
As you all know, we've been looking to fill a vacancy in our dispatch. We've had two vacancies, and we've been advertising out, and that's been a lot of fun. And Martha had seen our ad, responded to it, and she is a resident of Clay Township, which is nice. She comes back, you know, the background revealed that she's very highly respected among her peers and her previous employers. Their current employer really did not want to see her go. But I think we're getting lucky to bring her on board here, and hopefully she'll have a career here for many years.
Great, anybody have any questions for Martha? I've got her in the hot seat.
How long have you lived in Clay?
Going on eight years.
Newbie, huh?
Kind of.
If you've been here 30 years, that's a newbie.
You know how to swim, Martha?
I do.
Good. I ask everybody that. Any other questions? I'll entertain a motion.
Fellow trustees, I will make a motion to approve the Clay Township Police new hire, the full-time dispatcher, Martha Webster.
We have motion and support. Do we say when this one takes an effect immediately?
Yep, actually, her start date upon your approval would be January 2nd.
Okay.
Let her get through the holidays first.
All right.
Is it in the dispatch office at all?
Okay, we have motion and support. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes, congratulations, Martha.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yep, welcome aboard. All right, next. New hire, full-time officer, Keith McDonald.
All right, once again, you know, we're advertising out through M. Coles, which is the only place we advertise for officers. Keith was looking for a job at the time, we had one going. He came in, applied, did very well in the interview process, and had, we have completed the complete background investigation as well, and no issues there whatsoever. Once again, everybody spoke very highly of Keith, so I think we're pretty lucky getting him to come aboard, and hopefully, once again, have a longtime employee of Clay Township.
Great, Keith, you know how to swim?
Yes, sir.
Good, we don't have to buy you a float coat.
He's a former marine, so he can...
All right, former, very good. Anybody have any questions for Keith?
How long you been in Clay Township, where, do you live in Clay Township?
I do not, sir.
Okay, where do you live at?
Uh, Belleville.
Where?
Belleville.
Oh, Belleville, okay, that's not too far.
Nope.
Perfect.
Any more questions? Keith, you have some previous police department experience?
I worked with St. Clair County for a short period of time.
You didn't have any run-ins with Dave back there, did you?
I did not, sir.
Okay, just checking. He can be a little feisty.
We make him a lieutenant. Another lieutenant.
Well, is Steve a captain yet? No.
Well, a captain of what? All right, let's get on track.
Board, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Clay Township Police Department new hire, full-time officer, Keith McDonald.
Okay, motion and support, any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes, all right, Keith, congratulations, sir. We'll be seeing you around. Last but not least, police new hire, full-time officer, Kenneth Casmac?
Cosmac.
Cosmac, okay, sorry about that.
Put an A in there.
Yeah, Cosmac.
Uh, once again, Kenneth had seen that we were running an ad for a full-time police officer. He does have previous experience with the city of Royal Oak. Keith, or, yes, I'm sorry, Keith had left for... yes, I'm sorry, Keith had left for, Kenneth, I got K's here. Had, uh, worked with him for four years and took a little bit of a break, did some things on his own, seen that he wanted to get back into police work. Um, once again, the background investigation was completed, no issues there whatsoever, nothing but, uh, good findings on that end, and, uh, we're looking to bring him aboard and hopefully another long-term employee.
Sounds great, Kenneth, you know how to swim?
Good enough, I think.
Okay. At least make it back to shore, huh?
Yes.
Good. Any questions for Kenneth?
I'll make a motion to approve police new hire, full-time officer Kenneth Cosmac.
Support.
Yeah, motion and support, any discussion? This is gonna get you pretty much where we wanna be, staff level, right?
Yeah, that's, I don't know what we're gonna do with that, what do you think, Steve? No, you're not going on vacation. That's what he's already thinking, Gary.
Yeah, first time in four years for a staff though?
Yeah, it will be nice. You know, I mean, we're not unique to that, I mean, pretty much everybody's going through that.
Right.
It, it's, uh, unfortunate right now, but hopefully it'll turn around.
Yep. Very good. Let's vote on Kenneth. Any, uh, any more discussion?
I'll just warn these gentlemen and ladies that chief is fair, firm, and friendly.
Yeah.
So.
Hey, Steve.
Good luck to you. We're excited to have you.
Yes. All right, hearing no more discussion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, congratulations, are you, you go by Ken or Kenneth?
Uh, Ken.
Oh, thank God. Yeah. All right.
Know how that goes.
Good job, Ken.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
All right, that's all we have on our new business. Board member comments. Cindy, you got anything?
I'd just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and hope you have safe holidays. Congratulations to Martha, Keith, and Ken, and also Scott down at the fire department. That's all I got.
Very good.
Yes, uh, congratulations to all the new hires, uh, Scott, Martha, Keith, Kenneth, any other K's?
I guess not.
And, uh, the planning commission, uh, was last, uh, two weeks ago, and we moved the solar energy, uh, amendment up to the board, uh, for approval, reviewing approval, uh, and the noise ordinance, uh, it's pretty ambiguous at this time, so we have the planner working on three options, uh, and that's coming forward probably at the next meeting, uh, for another review. And Merry Christmas, everyone.
We haven't received that from the county yet, have we?
No, it goes to the county before it comes to us.
Yeah. So, okay, thank you.
We'll have some text amendments next meeting from the planning commission.
Okay. Mr. Chris?
Um, it's the time of year where we get a lot of snowbirds, right? People taking off for the winter, and I'm green with envy, but good for you. Um, couple things, right, reminds you to, um, turn down your thermostats, um, if you're on some kind of a forced air system at your home, shut the water off, probably doesn't need to be running, uh, if you've got a baseboard heater or something, well, that's different. And last but not least, um, don't forget that you can report in with the Clay Township Police Department, who will do like wellness, safety, and security checks on your property while you're away. Uh, it's a great service, um, offered by Clay's finest, um, so keep that in mind before you take off for the winter.
And you can turn your water up, right off, have our wire department turn the water right off.
It's a really good idea. You know, it's just a really good idea, things happen while you're away and if there's nobody staying at your place, it probably doesn't need to be on.
We don't need to see water right under the front door.
Let's just avoid potential problems, um, congratulations to our new hires, uh, feel like our township gets a little stronger every time our, our chiefs, um, bring us, uh, uh, new potential employees, and, um, last but not least, Merry Christmas, everybody.
Okay, thank you. Kristi?
Merry Christmas, um, many congratulations to all of our new people, and I am happy to report that our Goodfellow donations that we collected throughout the year totaled 1,245 dollars and two cents this year. And also a reminder, um, over the holidays, the pantry box and the pet blessing box, if we can throw a little something in there, that would be amazing.
Yes, thank you, lots of. The pet blessing box is actually empty, I've been filling it up. And stuff goes quick, so if anyone wants to put a cat, dog food or whatever in there, just feel free to do it. Um. I was with the Goodfellows today for the food giveaway, and, um, I'm not sure how many boxes they had, but there was a heck of a demand, first car, you know, it started at 10, the first car actually got there at 7:30 in the morning. Um, and they were lined up from the fire department all the way back to, um, Speedway, and they kept on coming. Uh, everybody got a box of food, turkey, and, uh, we had 150 dollar gas cards handed out, that was from Algnac Rotary. And like I say, I, I know there was well over 100. Um, I think we had three boxes, I wasn't there to the end, we had three boxes left over when the line was done. And, um, it was, it was quite busy, which is, I mean, it's a good thing, the Goodfellows were, were able to do that. And, um, so that was way cool, today we helped out a lot of people, and, um, congratulations to the new people, I'm sure we'll be seeing you around, uh, you're gonna have to have Cindy or Janet swear at you, right? You ready?
I'm ready.
Okay.
They're gonna get sworn in.
And, um, I know Chris always does his public safety PSAs, but mine, but we don't have any yet, I was gonna say, if you walk on ice, you know, be careful, fall through, you know, no, no ice is safe ice, right? Probably we'll have some ice by the next meeting, I'm thinking. And everybody have a Merry Christmas, keep an eye on your neighbors, especially if they're older, and, uh, and ju, just, just let them know you're around, and if anyone needs help, that you're available, or if anybody does need help, have them call us, we'll figure it out, give them some help. And, um, hug your kids, hug your family, hug your friends, everybody have a Merry Christmas. One more?
Motion to adjourn?
Yes, all in favor. Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.